We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll start tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor McLean, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's have a moment of silence for the people that lost their lives in the Twin Towers in New York, September the 11th, 2001. Heavenly Father, we're gathered here today to do the good works for our community. I ask that you look over our decisions we make and that they are the right ones to better our city. Keep your guiding hand on the Police and Sheriff's Department as times are in troubling. Keep them safe and out of harms way. Help everyone look through your eyes and treat their fellow man with respect and dignity as we travel through life struggles. Remember our soldiers and all who fought for our freedom, that they find peace in their hearts. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint Law Director Geiger as the council clerk for this meeting and for the special meeting that was held on September 1st.
Six.
So moved. The motion is second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Geiger, would you call a roll?
I will. Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Low?
Here.
Ms. Crayer?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Dwyer? Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ms. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
And Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
We need to add Robert Carter to the privilege of the floor.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to add Robert Carter to the privilege of the floor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. First on the agenda tonight is privilege of the floor. We have three speakers. The first is Kim Osteen regarding a water shut-off fee when not shut off. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. I'll remind all three speakers, tonight council rules allow for a limitation of three minutes.
Start. Okay, my name's Kim Osteen. I live at 1841 Oakland Parkway. I've only been, lived in Lima for about a year in November, December's when we moved in last year. So, in July, I get a water bill and I see a red bill, so I forgot to pay my bill the month before. So I put the bill down and like some people, I forgot to pay it. I happened to look it up and I thought, oh my gosh, I gotta pay my bill. They're gonna shut my water off. So I called the Water Department and I said, hey, I see you guys are gonna shut my water off July the 11th and I just wanna let you know, it was like the 12th, I'm on my way to pay it right now. They said, okay, so I go up and I pay the water bill. Next month comes, I get my water bill and it says, there's a thing on it that says "delinquent service." I thought, well, the delinquent service charge is $10. So I called them up and I said, listen, I said, what does this delinquent service be? They said, oh, Mr. Osteen, you were put on a shut-off list. I said, what do you mean? You didn't have to shut my water off. I came up and paid it all in full. They said, well, just because your name was put on the shut-off list, we're allowed to charge you $20. And I said, well, can I talk to the supervisor? And this is exactly what the woman said. It doesn't matter because city council controls this fee. And that's why I'm here. I just wanna find out if that's the truth. Does city council control that $20 delinquent service? Just because I didn't pay my bill on time, they took my name, this is exactly what she told me, and they put it on the shut-off list. And because they did that, they charged me $20. They didn't shut my water off. And she told me city council controls that. So that's why I'm asking. That's why I'm here. I just wanna know if city council controls that.
The answer is that city council approves by legislation the rules under which the Water Department operates.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That may be in the rules, but the actual execution of that is up to the Water Department and their director, assistant director, and the mayor.
Okay. Is there a regulation or an ordinance that I can look up to see if it actually says that? I mean, how am I gonna find this out?
Yeah, there is. Where do they find that? Mr. Geiger?
Do you have an email, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you can give it to Mr. Capralla, the Director of Utilities, before you leave the building, we'll be in touch with you tomorrow.
Okay. I appreciate that. So that's all I wanted to find out.
No problem. Thank you. Next is Matt Romick on behalf of Lacknip and the Lacknip purchase of property at 1440 West Spring Street. Mr. Romick?
Good evening. My name is Matt Romick. My home address is 7623 Hillville Road, Bluffton, Ohio. I'm here representing Lacknip tonight where I am the first Vice President of Lacknip in regards to purchasing the building at 1440 West Spring Street. As you're all aware, Lacknip has made a proposal to purchase the property at 1440 West Spring Street in February. We made that presentation. It sat at the city for a couple months. It came to first reading in June, I believe, where it went to second reading. You guys did not receive that in time, you know, to make an informed decision on that. Went to third reading in July where prior to that, I reached out to all of you on city council to see, you know, what your feelings were purchasing the building at 1440 West Spring Street. At that time, it was put on third reading and tabled. Ms. Adams brought a different proposal to the table. I went on vacation and haven't heard anything else until this past week about the purchase of the building at 1440 West Spring Street. Taking that second proposal to Executive Committee and to our Board of Directors, there were some questions regarding number four and number six in the proposal. We've asked for clarification for that to come through on number four and six and have not heard anything back on clarification in the language of that proposal. So I'm here today to, you know, I've heard some rumblings or mumblings that maybe we're not interested in purchase the building any longer, or maybe we have other plans. And so I'm here today to express that we're still interested in purchasing the building and seeing where we're at with that proposal. I wanna talk to you about a couple numbers real quick regarding one event. And we're gonna talk about Citywide Pride going back from 2001 to 2016. In that time, we've collected 12,926 tires in Citywide Pride. 1,231.26 tons of trash, which comes out to 2,462,520 pounds of trash that we've collected in Citywide Pride and about 796 cubic yards of brush in one event. In that same timeframe at Lacknip, we've also had volunteer involvement of 21,540 people donate time to Lacknip. For a total number of hours of 274,526 and a half hours that have been donated through Lacknip for a return investment to the city of $4.5 million. We get questions of what we're doing at Lacknip. That's one event. I didn't go through and figure out Ottawa River cleanup where we have 300 to 350 additional volunteers and tons more of trash that we're pulling out of the river on a yearly basis. And I would like you to take that into consideration when we're talking about the purchase of the building at 1440 West Spring Street. And that's really what I have tonight. See where we're at with that proposal. See if we're getting the clarification on number four and number six. So I can take that back to the Executive Committee on Thursday and then we can present that to the rest of the board the following week.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Robert Carter.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Carter. And this is about a ticket. My address is 805 Bingo Drive.
Thank you.
And couldn't talk about an incident happened on September the 2nd. I was going down Main Street. State trooper, I guess, we had crossed paths. He said, he pulled me over 'cause I barely touched the center to left of the yellow line. But, excuse me, but approaching me as I'm taking my wallet out the glove compartment, I gotta take my seatbelt off. Then all of a sudden, he gonna say, I ain't have my seatbelt on. Well, clearly, I had my seatbelt on. So basically, to me, I felt like, you know, it's disrespecting me. 'Cause one, he gonna say, well, I seen you do this, but how you can see me do this? I'm leaning on my seatbelt with it on. 'Cause I just got done doing a 12-hour shift. I mean, to me, being pulled over like that is a waste of taxpayers' money.
It was a state trooper that did this?
Yeah, a younger guy. Now, with this, I gotta go to court tomorrow at nine in the morning. I gotta miss work. I mean, that's all I gotta say.
Okay. I'm just gonna clarify. I mean, we don't have, council, the administration doesn't have any authority over the state patrol, okay? If this was a Lima police officer, we would be able to refer the issue to the chief and have it reviewed.
But it was in the city limits, right down the street.
But it's, I know, and the state patrol has authority throughout the state, okay? They can, county road, township road, city road, they've got authority for their powers. We don't have any authority over them, okay? We can't issue any kind of reprimand or anything else to them, so. I think if you explain that to the judge tomorrow, you may find that, you'll see your point of view.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Yep. Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that item A and D be received, filed, and approved, and item B and C be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve items A and D, and that items B and C be received and filed. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next is Communication Number One.
Ms. Adams?
From the auditor requesting legislation to enter into contract with UMS Corporation. Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication Number One be received and filed, and the law director authorized prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number One and to, do we need to authorize? And to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I move that Communication Number Three be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer to KLB Stores, Inc., DBA Grandview Drive Thru 2.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed, and the clerk be authorized to file with no objections with the Ohio Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Five and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Six.
From Downtown Lima, Inc., regarding "Celebrate the City."
Mr. President?
Mr. Low?
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I see we have in attendance this evening the Director of Downtown Lima, and if I could ask Aubrey Kay to come up and expand on this, I'd appreciate it. I was looking at any costs involved in public. Is it free to the public?
There will be event, there will be tickets to the event being sold. First, this is a collaborative effort between Downtown Lima, Inc., the Lima Allen County Chamber of Commerce, and the Veterans Morals Civic and Convention Center. So Abe Ambrosius is here as the new director of the Civic Center. We really wanna work together to bring the public downtown, to bring the public out for this to be an all-encompassing event where everybody can come to it. Obviously, there was a need, with some other events did not happen this summer, we were asked to come together as groups and put this event on, which we said yes to do, to doing. So it will be September 29th from 2016, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It will be in the southwest Quad of the Square. The Civic Center is a very active part of this, as well as Downtown Lima and the Chamber. So we're all working together to bring this event off. Tickets will be $50. They're available through the Civic Center box office. So you can purchase them there, and tables will be $4.50 for the event. There will be a taste of Lima, so we're trying to get restaurants that are all in Lima and Allen County, being that three groups are working together. So everybody can come down to that, and there will be beer and wine tastings.
It has in the letter in the communication from noon to 11:00 p.m.
That's the setup time. That's the setup time.
They start setting up at noon?
We're gonna begin setting up at noon. The event's only from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., so we don't wanna shut the street down till afternoon when we absolutely have to, have to.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm, okay. I know they're set up, but, so from noon to 5:00 is your setup time?
Yes.
Okay. And the event's from 6:00 to 9:00?
Yes.
Okay.
And we invite all of city council and everyone in residence to please come down and enjoy the downtown because it still looks very nice at this point. And we've had a really good summer down here, as for our retailers and our businesses, and I think within the city we have too, to celebrate all the good things that have happened this summer and this last year, as well as all the projects that are on the horizon.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation for a service and economic development agreement for water and sewer expansion on New Breck Road.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to amend Ordinance 20113.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean, I'm sorry, Mr. Low?
At this time, and I didn't ask him ahead of time, but I was wanting to know if Mike would come up and kinda give a brief summary of what this is about for those that are at home listening.
Mr. Capralla?
President and Council. These are changes to the Headworks project that we have gone, going on, the wastewater treatment plant. This is EPA mandated expansion we're doing. The Headworks is a $27 million project, and during the project, we have come across, obviously there's unknowns when you get into that type of work. And part of this work, we were gonna try to do ourselves on the diffuser, but we found that contractor could do it cheaper than we could have hired someone else to do it 'cause he's there, you know, doing the work. There's digester work that needs done. It's additional work that we see, not that the contractor wanted to do, that we've asked the contractor to do as part of the job. It's a rather large number, but in proportion to the $27 million job, it's like 3.5% more of a change fee. But these are things that we need done to keep that wastewater plant going and to be in compliance. So these items are.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Low. Thank you, Mr. Capralla. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to purchase a fire service meter.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Ten.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into a collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed. Legislation on our agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Eleven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with McBride Brothers.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that to receive and file Communication Number Eleven.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Eleven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Twelve.
From the Director of Public Works regarding changes to stormwater charges.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move to receive and file Communication Number Twelve.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Twelve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Reflect, the motion carried. Seven to one. Communication Number Thirteen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation involving state-issue one funds.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move to receive and file Communication Number Thirteen.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Thirteen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I would like to request Mr. Elstro, you can address, I know in the body you say various street resurfacing, Jackson Street, Finley, intersection realignment, and then Elm Street and Central Avenue, you say intersection improvement, intersection improvement, I assume. That's the traffic light.
Mr. Elstro?
Yes, Ms. Adams, the four projects that we will be applying funds for is the Jackson and Finley curve. That's been on our design standards to try to modify the sharpness of that curve. Wayne and High Street is a very expensive project. We're still looking for matching funds to federal highway funds for that project. Our annual resurfacing project, we'll be submitting an application. And our fourth project, but not the least of importance, is the Elm and Central signalization. This was a project which I believe the Traffic Commission recommended a signal two years ago, and we have advised council and the public that as soon as we find funds, we will fully signalize that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Well, just a minute, Mr. Low. Did you have any questions?
No. Thank you, Mr. Low.
Mr. Elstro, on that corner of Jackson and Finley Road, do they plan on using that vacant lot that's there now? Do they have plans drawn up?
That is correct. The vacant lot on the east side of Jackson and Finley, we have discussed the owner, with the owner, our interest in trying to straighten out that curve. We have no written agreements with the landowner. We would have to find funds to actually do the excavation, realign the curve of the roadway, including the curbs and gutters, et cetera.
Okay, has the Quick Stop been spoken to?
I don't believe that it will affect the Quick Stop real estate.
Okay.
It's the real estate where there was a, yeah, a house that fell into repair and somebody bought it up on auction and demolished the property.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Fourteen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation for the Schoonover Lake Dam rehabilitation project.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Communication Number Fourteen be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Fourteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Fifteen.
From the Director of Utilities regarding the North Central Solid Waste District five-year solid waste management plan, 2017 to 2031 plan adoption.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication Number Fifteen be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Fifteen. Is there any discussion?
This council won't authorize the legislation.
And, Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I would also like the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to amend the original motion to include the law director preparing any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
This board meets and approves the Sky Bage and Refuge Contract period, and it's an extended period of a number of years, and this looks like from 17 to 2031. It will include a generation fee of a dollar per ton increase when they take a refuge out, which is gonna equate to five cents, or $5. Five cents a month to your bill. It's not a big amount, but it is something that they look at for our future, and just wanted everyone to know that this is not something that's gonna kill us. It's just something we have to approve as council for the future. Our rates will not be affected that much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries. The motion carries, seven to one. Next is reports of committees, the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I would like to thank each one of the council members that came to this final meeting. We had lots of ideas were expressed, and it was good to hear everyone's opinion, and there was a lot of like-mindedness. I would also like to thank my fellow committee members, Dr. Glenn and Mr. Lowe, for their participation. Each member has, of course, received a copy of the committee report, and I would like to make the motion that it be received and filed.
Second.
Approved.
And approved.
The motion on the second is to receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Councilor Crayer. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, second.
You seconded it. I did. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next is Resolution 716.
Resolution amending Resolution 1110.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move to, I move Resolution 0716 be defeated.
Second.
The motion on the second is to defeat Resolution 716. So a yes vote defeats it. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I thought the ordinance 177, Day 16 is the defeating, because we have another ordinance with a different contractor.
I may need to retract.
Yeah.
Are you going to withdraw the second?
Take second, yep.
Mr. Gordon?
Adopt Resolution. I move to adopt Resolution 0716.
On its first reading?
On its first reading, yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
The motion on the second is to adopt Resolution 716 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
This is something we've had out on our books since 2010 on the storm sewer assessment. I have opposed it from day one. I will continue to oppose it. The reasons behind it, I believe, is the way it's weighted to, it costs the businesses more out of their pockets than it does the public that uses our streets, that comes to our businesses, than we're the ones that employ the people that pay the income tax. I have opposed it, and I'm going to continue to oppose it. So if anyone wants to know why, they're more welcome to stop me after this, and I'll be happy to explain it further, but that's the reason I'll say no to this.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I had a lot of, a lot of folks had talked to me about this today, and I'll say about fifteen to twenty people, I gave some calls about it. And I know many say I'm both opposed this, last time when it came around, you know, and we need more time to explain to people. A lot of folks is not knowing what we had passed, what was passed in the past there. Because it took me almost an hour to sit there and explain just a little small piece what was going on there. I hope you guys put this on second reading, so we get opportunity to get the folks educated on this, because some folks don't know anything about this when we had first, when this first came about. And city council made this, because we got new city councils on board now, you know, and I think we'd be better off, we get someone educated on this a little bit more, find out what's going on, so we can explain to the public a little bit better on that. Because like I say, I had not had the time to get to the folks. Only thing they see that, they think the water's going up. And this is something that was already voted on in the past, and if it wrong, it's like stepping, saying it right, but this is something that was already in there. And what we doing, just continue proving it though. But I want, I wish we could put this on second reading, give us more time to get to the public on this, and let them know what's going on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
My understanding of this is that council had pre-approved up to the amount of five dollars and 27 cents. The city's only been charging five dollars and three cents these past six years.
Right.
This does not affect the water as it pertains to storm sewer system. We had a discussion after pre-council, I was saying, you know, this is EPA, I'm seeing in the letter of communication, you know, Federal Water Pollution Control Act, Ohio Water Pollution Control Act, for small municipal separate storm sewer systems. This isn't a program that the city came up with, but they're trying to get ahead of the curve and alleviate some of these issues within the city and around businesses that have water retention issues. Because council had previously approved the five, twenty, five dollars and 27 cents, and has only been charging five dollars and three cents, I think they have shown responsibility in only charging for what was necessary, even though they could have gone up to five twenty-seven at any time without coming back to council, because we had already approved up to that amount. They have assisted and done 47 stormwater improvement projects, 11 engineering projects totaling $14 million in that time period. They're looking at projected $8 million more in projects going forward, and they would like to get them done in a more faster manner, turnover, turnaround than the six years of the previous programs. Because we are only extending the date of the renewal, I will support it. Any future increases that may come at a later time, I would concur, it would need to go to committee and have a full discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
You know, as a new member of council here, I was not around when this was originally introduced here, but I understand the logistics behind it as far as what was approved by council, given, given the city, you know, the approval to go up to, not to exceed the five twenty, six twenty-seven, whatever that was. And again, you know, the city has proved that they have been loyal, and as far as not increased, they could have increased it over that period of time, but they did not, and as we all know, that prices increased, things go up, you know, and funds is needed. And since this has already, had already been acknowledged, that the city would have the ability to go up to that amount here, I think it's only fair that they be allowed to go ahead and proceed with a lot of the necessary improvements that are needed in this city, this affects the sewer. As many of you may remember, there was a gentleman that was here last month talking about the water that was backing up in his yard over by Rob here, and this will give them the ability to be able to fix some of those repairs. A lot of homeowners are being affected by this in certain areas, and if we were that individual that was having sewer in their yard and having water backed up here, we too would be, would be, I would believe, would be glad to be able to accept the fact that this is only a $2,088 increase per year on a residence bill. And so, to me, it is worth the increase to have things fixed in the sewer, and for us to be able to proceed with getting some of the much-needed improvement in our city. $2,088 cents a year is, is a small price to pay for the improvements. This would generate $90,000 a year, and would be a big help to help the city to do a lot of improvements that are very much needed, and I would be supporting them.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
Mrs. Miles, you are correct. It's only 90,000. But the weight of this goes back on the back of the businesses. The customer, the residential worth $2,088 is not the question. This is the problem with this. We weight this on the business side of this. Yes, we want people to come into the city and do business with us, but we don't want to penalize a business to come in. And I think that's what we've done with this legislation all the way through. I've opposed it for that from the beginning, and I will continue to oppose it for that reason. It is 60 to 70 percent weighted on business. They're the ones that's paying the amount. Anybody with a big parking lot or any place to park, period, is the one that's paying the premium. And that is in itself detriment to people coming into the city. We, as business owners inside the city limits, have employees. We pay the income tax. If we are continuing to put up doors and block people from coming in as business owners, we're going to have them all move outside. So that's the reason I oppose this, not because of the $500 and 27 cent fee. We approved that a long time ago. I didn't, because I voted no, and I will continue to vote no. It's the other reason that I'm out. Okay?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
One clarification to what Mr. McLean is saying. Actually, everybody's treated the same. Folks are charged based upon an analysis of the hard surfaces of their property, whether you're a residential property, or a commercial property, or nonprofit. So when you assert that the businesses are paying more, it has to do with the nature of their facilities, and any kinds of changes they can make to those facilities to, in fact, deal with the runoff. So again, I would want everyone to be aware, public as well as council, this is a set of mandates that we, just like when Mr. Capella steps up and talks about the improvements that are needed at the wastewater plant, we have to, we are now being expected to manage stormwater. Someday, we will be expected to treat stormwater. And all of those issues of the volume of stormwater that are introduced into the sewers and into streams will, in fact, entail additional charges. And so, this was a fee that was generated not by just throwing a dart at the wall. There were engineers involved in doing calculations of what the costs would be, but also how those costs would be spread based upon hard surfaces on everybody's property. So if you've got a rooftop, or you've got a parking lot, or a driveway, all of those went into the calculations, and this was done explicitly to be fair. Those who generate the most stormwater pay the highest fee. And it's, it was not done to weight this against businesses. It was, in fact, done in a way to take care of the stormwater management issues that we're charged with as the municipality.
Thank you. Mr. Elstro?
Respectfully, I'd like to point out just a couple more points. Over the first six years, Ms. Adams described some of our accomplishments that we've been able to achieve, as well as the, she referred to the capital project list of $8 million of additional projects that we'd like to accomplish. I don't want for the public to lose sight of the ability for businesses to earn and achieve credits. The way this was set up, as the mayor described, is, I think, the fairest way that we can. It's one ERU per parcel, per residential parcel, and then all the businesses are measured out by, on a standard of ERU, which means the imperviable surface that those property owners hold. And the vast majority of business users are fairly small. The downtown merchants in the downtown, most of those are one ERU. You know, a fast food place, this increase might be something on the neighborhood of $35 per year. I know that's significant, but over the six-year period of time, it's a 4.5% increase or less than 0.35% increase per year. So we are way under the cost of living. But I do not want to lose that message that commercial users, commercial users do have the ability to lower their bill by earning credits. And that is, there's a whole array of things that can be done. We have a stormwater manager in place that can explain those. We have those listed on our website, what can be done. So somebody who does have a large bill because they have lots of parking lot, lots of roof, can find ways to detain water, to find ways to create green space, to find ways to let that flow out at a restricted rate rather than a gushing all at once rate, and they can earn up to 50% credit annually going forward on all their stormwater assessments. So please keep that in mind. I would appreciate this consideration of this resolution, and again, as it's been pointed out, the resolution at hand merely postpones the date of communication to council from the administration, from that of July 31st to that of September 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean?
No.
Councilor Lowe?
No.
Councilor Crayer?
No.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Glenn?
No.
Councilor Miles?
Yes.
Councilor Nixon?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Resolution 716 will go on its second reading as a four to four vote. Ordnance 17716.
This is on second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with quality coatings.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that, I move to defeat ordinance 17716.
Second. The motion on the second is to defeat ordinance 17716. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Just remind councilors, a yes vote is to defeat. Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Lowe?
Yes.
Councilor Crayer?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Glenn?
Yes.
Councilor Miles?
Yes.
Councilor Nixon?
Yes.
And Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordnance 17716 has been defeated by an eight to zero vote. Ordnance 17916?
Mr. President?
Hold on. Which is levying special assessments for property maintenance code charges. Ms. Crayer?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I move that ordinance 17916 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 17916 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Lowe?
Yes.
Councilor Crayer?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Glenn?
Yes.
Councilor Miles?
Yes.
Councilor Nixon?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordnance 17916 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordnance 18016, levying special assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I move that ordinance 18016 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 18016 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Lowe?
Yes.
Councilor Crayer?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Glenn?
Yes.
Councilor Miles?
Yes.
Councilor Nixon?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordnance 18016 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordnance 18116, amending the 2016 annual budget. Ms. Adams?
How come he ain't reading?
He's not.
Oh, that's all.
He's got a bunch of paperwork.
I can read.
I can read.
I can read too.
Well, you did, okay. Mr. President, I move that ordinance 181 Day 16 be passed on its first reading.
Thanks.
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 18116 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Lowe?
Yes.
Councilor Crayer?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Glenn?
Yes.
Councilor Miles?
Yes.
Councilor Nixon?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordnance 18116 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordnance 18216.
An ordinance amending Section 140201 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio, governing adoption of standard code.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that we pass ordinance 18216 on its first reading.
Second.
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 18216 on its first reading. Is there Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18216 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18316.
Authorizing the mayor to accept a donation from the Lima Senior Class of 1964.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to pass ordinance 18316 on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18316 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
And Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18316 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18416.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission requesting state issue one funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to pass ordinance 18416 on its first reading.
Yes. Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18416 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18416 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18516.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with McBride Brothers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to pass ordinance 18516 on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18516 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18516 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18616.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and administer 319 grant funds from the Ohio EPA Division of Surface Water.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to pass ordinance 18616 on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18616 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I do have a question. Mr. Elstro, perhaps you could answer this. Division of Surface Water, how does this tie into what we're doing with the stormwater utility?
These are stormwater, these are EPA funds made available to communities like ourselves that have established stormwater utilities. In fact, we were successful in getting a 319 grant, as you recall, a year ago, which we used in part to construct the green parking lot at the corner of Spring and Union Streets. As I mentioned to many of the councilors that I had discussions with about the stormwater utility and the need for increased fees, we pledged that should we be able to get the 24 cent a month increase, we would not be lazy about seeking outside funds. And in fact, it is a merit to us that we do have a stormwater utility and a funding stream, and that becomes acknowledgement by a grantor like this of the accomplishments that we're trying to do in compliance with the Stormwater Act of 1972. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, thank you. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yeah.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18616 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. 18716.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Neptune Equipment Company for the purchase of an eight-inch Protectus fire service meter.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 18716 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18716 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18716 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18816.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the FOP Park Rangers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance, ordinance 18816 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18816 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18816 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 18916.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a service and economic development agreement with the Allen County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 18916 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 18916 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 18916 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 19016.
Granting permission to downtown Lima Inc., Lima Allen County Chamber of Commerce, and Veterans Memorial Civic and Convention Center to hold "Celebrate the City."
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
I move that ordinance 19016 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 19016 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 19016 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 19116.
Amending ordinance 20113.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 19116 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 19116 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 19116 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 19216.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for the purchase of three vehicles for the Public Works Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to pass ordinance 19216 on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 19216 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 192 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 19316.
Accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 193-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 19316 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
Yes.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 19316 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 19416.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for provision of land bank manager services.
That would be me.
Ms. Crayer.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move that 19416 be passed on its first reading.
Is that your second?
Nobody's gonna say.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 19416 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilor McLean.
Yes.
Councilor Low.
No.
Councilor Crayer.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Yes.
Councilor Miles.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 19416 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Selenious Business, Mr. McLean.
Couple items this morning, this evening. Lacknip. You know, you've gotten to see this contract. We have counsel of none. So, eventually, it'll get to us. And from that point on, we can make a discussion. But I appreciate what you've gave us tonight because that is important information. We know the work that you do. And we also know that you've made a good service of the building that's out there. We just want to make sure that it continues that use. Another thing that we did tonight as council people, we are looking at the budgets and what people of Lima pay out. You know, and just in my utilities department, the way that we have things set up is, we brought forth some legislation tonight to purchase a water valve for the new FedEx building. This was $15,640 for a valve, and it has to come in council for approval. Two legislations later, we're approving a 3.5% increase on Headwater, the plant, the Headwater project, of a 3.5% increase of $998,000. So, you see, as council, we have a very broad range of things that we have to look at. And sometimes, we may not all agree on what we think is right and wrong, but there's a reason behind it. And we try to make sure that it's good for the city of Lima. So, I want everyone just to understand that. We don't argue and fight up here. We have a reason for it. We get along, but not everybody has the same opinions on whether it should pass or not. So, just wanted everyone to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Low.
I only have one thing. I just want to say kudos to the Public Works Department. Came out, I had, I was shopping earlier this week. A lady told me after the last rainstorm that there was a tree that had blown over. She was forced to redo her sidewalk, which means she had to cut the root of the tree. So, when the next storm came through, it made the whole tree uproot. And from the time I made the phone call, I remember going home and getting my daughter. And I came back around the corner, and the city department was out there taking care of the tree almost instantly. And I tell you, that said a lot to that resident. It said a lot to the neighbors. So, salute y'all. Thank you so much for doing your job quickly. It was good. And they cleaned up very well. There was no complaints about what was left or any of that. So, I thank you. And that not only made y'all look good, it made me look good as a councilman. But I appreciate that. And that's it. But I appreciate that, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Ms. Crayer.
Uh, just a few things. First of all, one of the newest businesses to move into the fourth ward, as many of you probably know, is Vino Bellomissio. On October, I'm sorry, they're having another Oktoberfest on September the twenty-fourth. This is a fundraiser, and if you'd like more details about this event, who's going to be playing, what kind of delicious craft beers they'll be serving, visit that weather place, or visit their website or their Facebook. But mark your calendars for September twenty-fourth. It's a great community event. The Rodney Keys have done a great job with that part of the ward. Haven't gotten any complaints from neighbors, so customers are being respectful, and I'm grateful for that. Also, for those of you who pay attention, Lakewood West will not be having a meeting this month. They will be meeting again in October. And then lastly, the Riverside North Boulevard Association will be having a block party for all of you who live in that part of the city. We have five hundred homes that encompass that neighborhood residence. So at the Bradfield Center this Sunday from three to six, come out for some hot dogs and haircuts. It's gonna be a fun time, so we're, one thing, yeah, free, free haircuts and free hot dogs and free hugs from Sam McLean, he did not know what he was gonna give. But one thing that we're doing differently and that has not been done for a while is we're doing just community development, reaching out to the residents around, letting them know we're there, giving them opportunity to come to our meetings, and exchanging the face of our neighborhood associations as they should be, warm, welcoming, but just first of all, letting people know. So I do suppose that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Crayer. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to call a finance meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, at five thirty in this chamber. And it will be an issue that's already in finance, the mayor's pay, to be discussed. Secondly, I would like to thank Counselor Glenn for the event this past Saturday, Ceasefire Lima, and for the citizens that involved themselves in wanting to start a discussion and meet with the young adults in the city and hear their concerns and answer our questions. It was very informative. Again, I know a lot went into preparing to have this meeting. This group is, young people have said they will be the core of the group. They're going back to their schools, their neighborhoods, hopefully to encourage others to attend any future meetings. And those sites will be announced, from what I took from the meeting, at a later date. Not necessarily in this building again, but maybe we'll try and reach out into parks or whatever and meet where people maybe feel more comfortable coming to that area. But again, thank you, Counselor Glenn. The last item is to follow up on Counselor McLean. This contract proposal for Lacknip, as he said, we have not seen what you have come back with. You cited number four and number six on our proposal to you. I felt it was kinda unfair to stand up here and list all your accomplishments, which I think we've all either are aware of for the past fifteen years or have participated and volunteered our own time. I know what Lacknip has contributed to this city, and I highly respect the organization. But I also have a duty to be responsible for taxpayers' money and land that they own. Credit in the proposal was also given to you for the improvements you've made to that building. That was not mentioned. If the proposal had come to us originally, as it was, for one dollar a year, I don't believe there was enough council support for that at that time. So it was either a defeat, or we discuss it. And as Counselor McLean says, we discuss it, and this is what came back. I would like to ask, Mr. Elstro, where is their proposal back to us? How soon will we get it? If they want an answer by their next board meeting, I don't believe it's gonna be able to happen. And what issues or what their counter proposals were for item four and six?
Mr. President.
Mr. Elstro.
Mr. President, Council. I don't know how to start. I think what we have here is two well-meaning institutions that are trying to find a way to look out for the best interest of the community, as well as, as Ms. Adams pointed out, do the most responsible thing. And I do believe that board members are well-intentioned, and I believe that council is taking a prudent and careful look at the proposal. And the proposal, as it has been offered back to Lacknip by way of Mr. Geiger and my own hand, needs some clarification to the board members. I think there's just some misunderstanding, not even misunderstandings. They asked for some clarity of terms. I do believe what we have relayed to Lacknip was the latest discussions that we had, I believe in a pre-council session, where many of you had various comments of items that should be in an agreement. So I think it's just a matter of time when we make sure that the Lacknip board members are clear on the language that you all had intended. And I think this can go forward with both bodies' satisfaction. So I would beg you that over the next two weeks, I believe that myself and Mr. Geiger can spend a little bit of time and get this back on point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Glenn.
Yes. On September twenty-sixth, our next city council meeting, we will be bringing in our task force, minority, police recruitment task force. They will be coming in, giving some information on what's going on, what's some of our new assignments that we are doing to try to recognize minorities to get involved in the police department and plus law enforcement. So they will be at the next city council meeting on September twenty-sixth. So make sure that out. Also, I want to thank Ms. Miles and Ms. Adams. I appreciate you guys so much for coming out for that. The kids are very excited, and Chief Martin, and what made me so happy about it, when we was cleaning up, everybody got in one of you guys' seats. He played the role, like they've been watching you guys. And I liked the one Jesse Love, you know, little kid, Jesse Love played you. I mean, they all said in the CBA, "Opportunity, it's fun time." And I like it, you know, and had opportunities. Some of the kids didn't even know what city council did. So with being involved with the ceasefire, we all got together, we got opportunity, explained them some different things about the city. They participate real well. They ask chief questions, and I'm very excited about some of the kids there. And we also got a project that we're gonna be sending, we are gonna put together our junior city council. And that's how we're gonna continue working with the kids, keep them together. These kids are very eager. The ones we got here now, they want to get involved, and I already put the proposal together, how we're gonna go about doing it. And it's gonna be great. For them to get in this summit, U Summit up in Pennsylvania, where they have all the kids in politics and different things getting involved, it's gonna be November seventeenth down in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where all the kids that get involved with politics, like junior city councilmen, you know, 4H and them groups like that, they have a special group in Pennsylvania. So we're gonna work on getting these kids down there for a two-day event, November seventeenth to the nineteenth, down there, so they can get an opportunity to learn things. But we will be meeting with these kids once a week. We'll start off once a week, because most kids feel that we put things together and it fall by the wayside. We're gonna save these kids. Yeah, we got more kids calling. I went to school today, and one of the principal gave me a call, said that she want to make sure that she get more kids involved, they've been asking about it. So word of mouth did it. So we're gonna continue working with the kids, get special events for these kids to do, special tasks for them to do, and they might grow, be like Todd Gordon or Sam McLean, or Ms. Miles, or Ms. Rebecca, because they love this, you know? And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna push these kids and see what they can do, continue doing, you know? And this is part of saying no to crime. And one kid told me, you know, we was cleaning up everything, said, "Ms. McLean, I don't have anything to do but go to the football game," and that's it. What I supposed to do after that? You know, I don't have the money, go out to the mall. These kids walked from Ten Street all the way up to here. Ten Street, they from Perry. They walked all the way from Ten Street, and I just went to the football game talking about it, you know? And they walked from Ten Street all the way to here just to be at this meeting, because they were excited about it. And that just brings me a fiber gas, because I, you know, I love kids so much and trying to help them so much, to lead them in a different direction. And all the things that we've been going through, I say week, because we all in this boat together, and it just, that, you know, that made a happy face. That makes you feel so good when these kids, whoa, and they've been calling me. I should've gave my cell phone number, because they called, "Ms. McLean, we gonna have another meeting. I got more friends, we'll get involved." And that is so great, but I thank you two council persons that came out and so they can picture the people, and they say, "We see them on TV." They got to see the people, our council people, face to face, in person. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles.
The Westgate Neighborhood Association will not have a regular meeting, but they will have a picnic instead, September eighteenth at six P.M. The food is free, you don't have to bring anything. And we kinda really want to send the invitation out to individuals who want to come out and just be a part of the Neighborhood Association without, you know, any meeting,